Ms. Vogt.
Here.
Mr. McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mr. Punay.
Here.
Mr. Oden.
Here. That stands for our flag salute this evening that will be done by Boy Scout Troop 262.
Color guard, prepare to advance. Color guard, advance. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard, prepare to post colors. Color guard, post colors. Color guard salute. Two. Color guard regroup. Color guard dismissed.
Good evening.
Would you all join me as we offer a prayer? Gracious God, we give you thanks for this day, for the wonderful change of seasons that we enjoy and for allowing us to enjoy it here in Palm Springs. We thank you for this new council and we remember gratefully those who have served faithfully in the past. We ask that you would do this council with wisdom, courage, and compassion and that as a community, as city employees, as elected officials, we might all work together to bring about the best for all the members of this community in whatever condition of life they find themselves, that Palm Springs may become the paradise for each of us that we would like it to be. And this we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Our invocation was offered to us tonight by Father Andrew M. Green of the Church of St. Paul of the Desert. We thank you very much, Father Green. Tonight, there are no presentations. Report on the posting of the agenda, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you have before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Wednesday, November the 26th. There are additional materials tonight before the council in the yellow folder. Those items are relating to the Community Redevelopment Agency Item A. There are two revised resolutions. Item number two, which will be rejecting bids. Item number six, that is a sheet that has some small changes in the agreement. And those should be in the yellow folder before you.
Thank you. Close session report by City Attorney, please.
Yes, Council and Agent meant in closed session. The items listed on the closed session agenda under real property negotiations, real property negotiations with VIP Motors. That item was not discussed. Under items of existing litigation with the agency, we discussed the item involving assistance for local government accountability versus the redevelopment agency and the alcohol anti-ban. We gave a status report on the status of litigation. No action was taken. With respect to the City of Palm Springs, real property negotiations, the item involving Desert Water Agency was not discussed. The item involving the Burr Group was not discussed. The item involving Murray Canyon Palm Springs Town Homes was not discussed. The item of litigation with the city, the Calhoun versus City of Palm Springs, we gave a status report, a direction was given for negotiations. The, under anticipated litigation, exposure litigation in one case was not discussed and the initiation of litigation was not discussed. The threat to public facilities, security of public facilities was not discussed. There was an item of existing litigation on the supplemental agenda involving PERMA versus the City of Palm Springs. We gave a status report on that item. No action was taken. The, and then the council conducted an evaluation, City Attorney.
Thank you very much. The Housing Authority, the Financing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority have no business tonight and we will move to the appointment of the mayor pro tem of the City of Palm Springs.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Vogt.
As a new city council member, I have received approximately five-foot-high worth of materials to read and have worked myself through the first foot and have another four feet to read. And this comes under the realm of be careful of what you ask for in that at several public hearings and in private conversation, a member of the council has offered his help as a continuing member of this council. And so it is therefore my intention to nominate Chris Mills as mayor pro tem.
We have a nomination. Are there any others? Then we will close the nominations at this time. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt.
Aye.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Punay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. It is unanimous, Mr. Mills. Our mayor pro tem.
Mr. Oden.
Mr. Mills.
I just, I only hope that you do your job so I don't have to do mine.
It's always good to have good backup. I'm glad you're there. Okay, we will now convene as the city council and as the Community Redevelopment Agency, City and Council Redevelopment Agency. Approval of the minutes, and there are none at this time. This is a joint public hearing. Mr. Executive Director, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would just like to note that there is a substitution that we are not actually approving amendment here. We are asking you to approve a restated and an amended disposition and development agreement. And that is in your yellow folder, the first set of papers. It's CRA A-C. And that is what we're asking for a substitution. And with that in mind, I would ask Mr. Raymond, Director of Community Development, to come and give council details. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Actually, let me start out with the purpose of the restated and amended versus the amendment number one. We put the staff report together, but the amendments were lots of little sentences all over the document. And we thought, given that it was a new, more or less a new council, we thought you ought to be able to read the whole document rather than just get amendments that refer to sections all over the document. So, the item before you is a restated and amended disposition and development agreement with Coachella Valley Housing Coalition and Partnership Sunrise Hacienda Partners. It ends up being something else, Sunset Hacienda Affordable Housing Partners. And the, the DDA needed to be amended because when it was approved originally last July, July of 2002, the intent was that the project would apply for low-income housing tax credits, which is a federal IRS program administered by the state. They applied for tax credits in 2002. The project scored very well, but they were unsuccessful in getting the tax credits. In the fall, they applied for home funds, which is another source of federal funds, and received about half of the project financing through home. And then this spring, they applied for MHP funds. I believe it was Prop 46 money that was approved by the voters a year and a half ago or two years ago, the big bond issue for housing. And so they essentially now have the money in place to go forward with the one small gap and they're applying for one additional housing program to be able to go forward. The tax credit program has certain, has certain requirements for subordinate debt. And the MHP program has different requirements for subordinate debt. Our agency contribution is considered subordinate debt in the deal. So the purpose of the amendment is to amend our deal to conform to the requirements that the developer has to live under for their primary source of financing. So again, there's a lot of little things in there and they're all kind of the lenders and the attorneys for the lenders that are tweaking the agreement a little bit in order to get it to conform. So, it's, 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 we did one a couple of weeks ago for Vista Sunrise. It was essentially the same situation. They'd applied for tax credits, they're applying for MHP or they got MHP funds and they needed to make essentially the same types of changes to the deal. And we were, we, this one came a little bit after that in order to do that. So, I know you're probably not very familiar with the financing on the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, but that concludes my report.
Counsel, before I open the public hearing, remember this is a public hearing. Are there any questions? Then if not, I will open the-
I do have a question. On the, on the, so does that mean that we are now looking at this that was in the yellow packet as opposed to what was labeled CRA?
Yes.
Yeah, the resolutions are the same except the new resolution that was in your yellow folder says approving a restated and amended disposition and development agreement where the one that was in the binder says approving amendment number one to the DDA. So, everything else is the same. We just, it's called something else, so.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then we will open the public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to speak to this issue, please come forward at this time and give your name. You will have five minutes. This is for the public hearing. If there is no one, then we will close the public hearing at this time and counsel. I will entertain a motion at this time, an agency.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
I will move both of the resolutions, agency and council.
As recommended, revise.
Yes, as recommended, revise.
Okay. We have a motion.
A second.
And second by Mr. McCullough. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt.
Aye.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Punay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. It passes unanimously. We will adjourn as the Community Redevelopment Agency and continue as the city council. At this time, we will move to public comments. I have a number of cards here and the first person that I have is Nancy Stewart. If you would please come forward, followed by Sergio Santos, followed by Robin Burns. Good evening and welcome. You will have three minutes.
Okay, well, thank you. And I just, I am Nancy Stewart. I'm a resident of Palm Springs and you have my address. I just want to extend my husband and my best wishes and congratulations and good luck to each and every one of you on this council. You know, he's home making dinner. Somebody has to do it. So, I did want to make mention that I'm going to take that hat off and now I'm going to be a member of the tram board, Palm Springs Area Tram Board, one of two appointees by the city council. I serve currently as a vice chairman and our former mayor, Lloyd Marinoff, is our current chairman. I just wanted to let you know that we had an ecstatic, wonderful Thanksgiving weekend. We were up 48% over budgeted ridership for that weekend. It was tremendous. And if any of you were up there, you really had a great time. I wanted to let you know that we're not stopping. The season is approaching here for our Christmas tree lighting ceremony, which will be held on December 7th. I look forward to having each and every one of you come to the, to this particular event. It will be on December 7th at 5:00 PM and Sydney and Alexandra Sheldon will be our official flipper of the switch to get our light, our lighted tree at the top of the tram. I also wanted to let you know that Santa will be visiting on December 20th on Saturday. Yeah, from 11 to 3. And we are also open on Christmas Day and New Year's Day. So, we are going to have a ride and dine special, $30 for adults, 19 for children, and that includes your pass. So, we look forward to having more people come on up and enjoy, if you want to sit down dinner, we have our wonderful gourmet restaurant, Elevations. And if you need further information, please contact or actually, you don't even have to do that, just go on our website, pstramway.com. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Good evening, Sergio. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
It feels good to say that. I'd like to, on behalf of the Coachella Valley Taxi Owners Association, we'd like to welcome and congratulate all the new members of the city council. What a, what a race. Basically, we're, we're back here over this issue of advertising on taxis and we don't want to beat this to death, but we're hoping that we could get a new date on the agenda. to beat this to death, but we're hoping that we could get a new date on the agenda coming up with the city council to discuss this, because where we left off last time was a 2-2 vote, and it was to send it back to Sunline Regulatory Agency to let them get a consensus of all the cities. And basically, they've told us that that's not their job. And what we would like to do is see if we could sit with the new city council, and I'll let you hear our side of what our needs are. But one of the pressing matters that we have before us is the timing this year. We've been working on this for eight months, and we're headed into the busy season, which is a prime time for advertising, to get advertisers signed up if we are allowed to advertise on taxis. And time is of the essence. For every month we're not advertising, we're losing dollars that our industry, we need so badly, because our income is down so much since 9/11, two years ago. That's basically all I have to say tonight, but I'm pleading with the council, if we could get this on the agenda as fast as possible, we would surely appreciate it. And our industry so needs us badly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robin?
Good evening. I have to tell you, it's very exciting to be up here and see all the people I voted for right there. I love it.
How many times did you vote?
You'll have to figure that one out, no. My name is Robin Burns. I've been a resident here, for those that don't know, for 10 years. I've had taxi business and a chauffeur sedan business here for nine years. I'm here on behalf of the taxi industry, as was Sergio. We've been through a bit of a ping-pong back and forth, as some of the members know, trying to get taxi advertising online. And I do have handouts, which I will give to our clerk here. Thank you. And to hopefully give you some background, those of you that have, are new to the board as to the situation, we're basically trying to do what is done all over the country, and we're hoping we can open up dialogue to again, put it back on the agenda. And if there is an issue with signage, specific standards, whatever it takes, I know they've resolved these issues from Los Angeles to New York. We are very open to doing this so that we can move forward with this issue. It's very important to us. And to give you an idea, our industry, we calculated, is losing $85,000 a month in revenue. It's very big, and it's a depressed industry. It also offers, for those of you that don't know, safety issues, which we desperately need. So we really hope that you do revisit this issue. We really hope to open up dialogue, and whatever we can work out, we are so open-minded to working with you and seeing what we can do to put this together. So thank you very much for your consideration. I hope you do take the time to read the handouts. It gives you a little bit of background of the situation. Thank you all.
Thank you. Susan Wasserman, followed by Peter Pickler and Bill Lee.
Hello, my name is Susan Wasserman. And I'm a Cathedral City resident. I have a 7th grade son at Raymond Creek Middle School and a 9th grade son at Palm Springs High School. They've been, my topic tonight is about the new Palm Springs Skate Park. They've been skating for about four years and looking forward to a local skate park for about two years. I have just heard that the Palm Springs City Council voted two weeks ago to exclude neighboring communities from the regular use of the beautiful new Palm Springs Skate Park. I understand that an annual membership fee will be available for Palm Springs residents, but that all non-residents must pay a daily use fee of $5. My children skateboard with the enthusiasm of a basketball or a football team member. They skate almost daily. Since the sign was first posted at the skate park site over a year ago, my boys have looked forward to being able to go there to skate most days after school for an hour or so. This council's decision will effectively ban my children from skating with their friends on a regular basis. At $5 a day per child, for my sons to skate at the new skate park five days a week would cost us $2,600 a year. We have visited skate parks in the Coachella Valley, High Desert, Ucaipa, many in San Diego, LA, Bakersfield, Fresno, Ontario, Sacramento, Lake Tahoe, even Hawaii, any place we've traveled. Those that have membership fees never restrict usage by one's address. We've had memberships at the Big Van Skate Park in Ontario for a couple of years, and at the Palm Desert Skate Park, my son's favorite skate park of all of these is the City Park in Fontana, built in a rather poor section of town frequented by the nicest, most considerate kids of any skate park, and it's free. If the issue is about money, a different scale for annual memberships is perfectly fine. Double or triple for non-residents, that would be fine. That'd be $20 to $30 a year, that's fair. My tax dollars may not have contributed to funding this skate park, but my family contributed $100 in good faith in January of this year to help build this skate park. Finally, I don't know if the decision was motivated by elitism or a desire to exclude your neighboring communities. I don't know what could possibly weigh in on this, but please reconsider your decision regarding membership fees for non-residents. I know that the old council voted this in, and this is a new council, although some of the members are the same. Please don't adopt an elitist attitude toward your neighbors. Let us pay our way with higher fees, hopefully only two to three times higher, not 260 times higher, but let our children also benefit from this community project. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Peter Pickler. I'm a resident of Palm Springs for the last 10 years. I'm a parent and board member of the Piranha Swim Team. I have a 13-year-old daughter that has been swimming for the team for the past four years. First of all, I will welcome the new mayor and council member and thank the mayor for all his support. First of all, I would like to let you know that after traveling to several swim meets all over Southern California, this is by far one of the nicest facilities there is. As the meet manager of our team, I've received many positive comments regarding our facility. Part of my job in running the meets is making sure that everyone is safe and has all their needs met while at the swim center. In the past four years, I have found myself unclogging toilets and urinals at every meet. I've also noticed that the boys' shower valves are leaking, which seems to be a great waste of water. My request as this new council is to address these issues. As a builder myself, I know that things can be done to correct these issues without going to great expense. Once again, thank you for your support.
And thank you. Bill Lee, followed by Tony Britton.
Hi, my name is Bill Lee. I'm a board member of the Piranha Swim Team and also secretary for that group. Should have brought a script, I guess. I just wanted to share some information with you and some numbers regarding the latest swim meet that was held the weekend before Thanksgiving. This was the Awa Caliente Piranha Swim Team Invitational. The final swimmer count for those two days was 780 swimmers. Teams from Arizona, San Diego, Los Angeles, Northern California, all arrived. 111 of those swimmers were local. In other words, they didn't stay overnight. They were from within an hour. Deck space was more than adequate for the number of swimmers and parents on deck at any one time, and we would like to thank the Palm Springs Council for that facility. It's a wonderful facility for swim meets. This particular meet was our fourth and biggest swim meet for the year. It was actually, it actually ended up being the largest swim meet in the history of Palm 599 families from 36 teams attended. Only, let's see, only 70 swimmers from 51 families were local or within an hour's drive. So 703 swimmers from 548 families stayed at least two nights average. We figure $250 average, so two days times $250 per family. That one meet raised approximately $250,000 for local businesses for Palm Springs. The total income generated for all four meets for the year is close to a half a million dollars. And just to note that we've been doing this for the past 31 years. I think that's all the numbers that I'd like to share. My 13-year-old daughter is a member of the swim team, and I can attest to the character development that occurs, the self-esteem that's developed by these kids. It's an amazing process to watch these kids swim. They absolutely have a ball, and they're good. In front of you, you have a copy of our newsletter, the Piranha Press, so please take an opportunity to look at that. And lastly, let me say, congratulations to the new council. We're glad to have you. And we really are looking forward to a helpful and working relationship. Thank you.
And thank you. Tony Britton.
Good evening, I'm Tony Britton. I'm a resident of Palm Springs and have been my entire life. I am here this evening to speak to you about the Palm Springs Community Concerts, which are beginning our new season, starting in January. This is our 46th consecutive season of exciting music performances. Members can enjoy all four concerts at a reasonable price of only $40 for adults. Students under 21 are admitted free. I boldly urge the council members to support this community event by becoming members, by spreading the word in Palm Springs and throughout our community. The season begins on Monday, January 26th, with violinist Michi Wakano, graduate of Juilliard, and continues with the second in the series on Saturday, February 7th, with Trio Norte, an exciting mix of Spanish guitar, gypsy violin, and tango accordion. The third concert will be held Thursday, February 26th, and is a stage production of I Get a Kick Out of Coal, with a touring cast of 10 singers, actors, and instrumentalists. The show celebrates the musical genius and legacy of one of America's most beloved songwriters, Cole Porter. The season concludes with pianist Antonio Pompo Baldi on Thursday, March 11th. He has performed with major orchestras throughout the world and has presented solo recitals in many prestigious venues, including Carnegie Hall. Mr. Pompo Baldi will also perform a student outreach program for the Palm Springs Unified School District. So this community concert series is benefiting not only our community, but the students within our community as well. I ask you to celebrate the magic of the live performances of the Palm Springs Community Concert Associations with our four great performances. Memberships are again, one low price of $40 for adults, and again, students, children, just get in free. That is, you can't find anything like this. Performances are held at Palm Springs High School Auditorium at 2248 Ramon Road at 7:30. And if you need more information on membership sales, I've brought handouts for you, as well as you can visit the website at www.pscconcerts.org. I thank you for your time, and I hope to see you there.
And thank you. Our next speaker is Joel Douglas. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and congratulations to you all. I reside at 222 West Chino on the corner of Bellardo, a block from Liberace's home. My home has been historically significant in Palm Springs history. My father, Kirk Douglas, and his wife, Ann Douglas, have been residents for almost 45 years, and have supported this city both financially and promotionally, both locally and globally. Chino is one of the oldest roads in Palm Springs, and many have referred to it as the gateway to Old Las Palmas. It has endured through very difficult times. My home is on the corner of one of the most heavily-traveled tourist routes. Several years ago, the entire area was on the verge of extinction. But with the efforts of my neighbors, we are now on the road to recovery. I have personally invested over half a million dollars in restoring the integrity to my home in the corner. Chino is not only an important area for the residents that live there, but also for the tourists and tour buses that go through there hourly. I come before this council to ask you to help me, to help you, and in so doing, help all of us. What I propose, although little in actual investment dollars, is huge in the community spirit it develops. A new working relationship between city and its citizens. What I suggest is a cooperative between me, my neighbors, and the city of Palm Springs to restore what is already there, but for whatever reason has been allowed to decay. For example, the Center Meridian down Chino, it has a sprinkler system, has power, but there are no plants nor lights for the trees. We will buy the plants, you maintain them, and put the lights in the trees. The parking lot on the corner of Chino and Bellardo, the walls are crumbling, old mattresses and garbage strewn in the parking lot, broken concrete lies on the sidewalks. God forbid, someone should trip and sue the city for triple the cost of the renovations that are being sought. Not to mention, being right across the street from Liberace's home, one of the highlights of those celebrity tour buses, hardly the image Palm Springs is trying to project. You fix the wall, repave the parking lot, and we'll paint the wall and replant the area. Ladies and gentlemen, what I'm suggesting costs so little, but it means so much at a multitude of levels. This kind of cooperation properly promoted could be utilized all over the city, citizens and government working together. This is an idea whose time has come, so please do not let it go by. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you. Matthew Talala.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. First, my name is Matthew Talala, 200 South Palm Canyon, and it's L.A.L.A., and that's Honorable Mayor, council, and staff. America, the most successful country in the world, was built on creativity. Our founding fathers were very creative, so is our constitution and the amendments. We have slowed way down in our creativity. We now have cumbersome tax laws, labor laws that are one-sided, legislations and litigation laws that allow people to maliciously and improperly get what belongs to other people. The great people who occupied these seats before you did a great job. Palm Springs is a great place to be now. However, we don't need to stop there. There is nothing wrong with getting Palm Springs to be the best city in the Coachella Valley, and we have what it takes to make it so. To make it the best city economically, culturally, and aesthetically, we have to use our creativity. We have a lot of competition down valley. We do suffer at times in loss in business and loss of citizens to down valley for the lack of shopping, lack of housing, gated communities, and the needs that a lot of young families are requiring. During the week, business in Palm Springs is fairly slow, and that is probably because the convention center is not occupied. I remember years ago, during the week's business was mainly out of the Palm Springs Convention Center. And I do applaud the efforts to enlarge the convention center, and I hope that we will stay on track to resurrect it and bring the business back again. The larger the customer base is, the better Palm Springs benefits. Please use us to brainstorm with you, to reach some creative ideas together, and I am looking forward to working with you in the future. Best of luck.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this time. I don't have any more cards. Good evening, please give your name to the clerk.
Good evening, my name's Jason Loyah, and I am Vice President of the Palm Springs Firemen's Association. And on behalf of the association, we'd like to wish you a warm welcome, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Just to give you a few of our upcoming events that we have going on, we will be involved in the Parade of Lights. We'll have our El Diablo decorated. It's our 1931 American La France fire engine. We'll also have the- We'll also have the famous, the horse-drawn CSFA steamer. They usually only do it three years in a row, but they enjoy coming to Palm Springs every year, so they will be here again. And we will also, the association will also be sponsoring some of the needy families in the city here in Palm Springs with handing out Christmas gifts and giving gift certificates for groceries at the local grocery stores here in town. And also, we would like to let you know that our doors and line of communications are open, and we look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in public comments? At this time, we will move to the consent agenda. We'll close public comments, since there is no one else. If there are any abstentions, please let Madam Clerk know at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
I have an abstention on Item 2 for business purposes, and on Item 4, a few warrants. 992-756 through 58, business-related.
Are there any others, any items that anyone has, a request to pull or a question?
Item 1, if I could just pull and ask a question.
If you just want to ask a question, then we won't pull it.
It might take a lengthy answer, so.
I just have a question on number 2. If we could just tell me how much work there is remaining on the 20 homes that are remaining. And this is in the sound insulation program for the homes that are within the noise corridor of the airport.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The item that's before you tonight is to award, or was to award at this point, is actually to ask you to reject the bids and authorize us to go back and rebid immediately, was for some 60 homes, and there are still 20 homes out there that have not agreed to participate, and we are continuing to pursue them. Our hope is that we'll be able to get a few more of them to agree to participate, but there's no guarantee. And they will have probably about four months after we start the project to try to get into it before it'll be too late. So we will continue to pursue them through registered letters and knocking on doors and everything else to try to get them to participate. Our hope is, once they see their neighbors having $35,000 worth of free repairs done to their home, that they'll want to get involved.
Okay. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Move the consent agenda.
Completely, or you want to, 2 through 4?
Except for 1, I'd like to...
So the motion is to move items, to approve Items 2 through 4. Is that correct?
I'm abstaining on 2, but that's okay. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Mills and a second by Mr. Pugnay. Roll call.
Ms. Fote?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We'll move to Item 1, staff report, please. Or do you just want to ask your question?
I don't need a staff report.
Okay, just your question.
Mr. Smoot, I'm assuming this is you. The, what I'm trying to do is to understand a little further what we're being asked to do here is, it says the current airport use agreement calls for $750,000 general liability limits for, and, okay, and I understand that. Which would apply normally to cabs, is that correct? They fall into the category of commercial ground transportation operators.
That's correct.
And then, what we're doing here is reducing that to 300,000, or leaving it as it is, is it 300,000, is that correct?
As it is with Sunline, that's correct.
Correct. And that's a requirement out of Sunline, not from the airport.
That is correct.
Is the 750 requirement something new, then?
No, probably it would help if I could give you a little more background. For years, we had the $750,000 requirement when Sunline took over the regulation of taxi cabs six, seven years ago. At that point, this issue came up, and it was discussed, and at the time, the council told the staff that we should be following the Sunline regulations so we don't have the taxi cab drivers doing different things in different communities, and we agreed. Most recently, we put out an old form by accident, a new employee came onboard, and it had the old number in it, and that's what stirred up this hullabaloo. And so at that time, we said, we thought we had gotten official action by the council to leave it at 300,000. We had not actually had official action. So we're back tonight asking for official action for us to leave it at the $300,000 level as Sunline requires, for taxi cabs only.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. I'll move Item 1.
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Mills and seconded by Ms. Fote. Roll call.
Ms. Fote?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Extended consent agenda? Okay, there are no public hearings. At this time, we will have council comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports. Mr. Pugnay.
Yes, I had a question on this. In the third paragraph on the first page...
What are you referring to?
Oh, I'm sorry. On the memo to the City Council dated December 3 from the Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
And what item is that?
Aren't we on legislative action, Item 5, municipal code amendment?
Oh, okay, we'll be on that in just a moment.
Sorry about that.
We're on council comments, announcements, or inter-agency reports, then we'll move on.
No, I'll have those later, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Fote.
I just wanted to take a minute to have us thank the Fire Department for the service that they provided in the fires in San Bernardino, and I guess all through the rest of the state. I did not realize that our Fire Department was as involved as it was, and thank you very much, you guys did a fabulous job. And then the other question I have is regarding the public testimony from the taxi owners. Did, do we have, not having the background on that other than what we've had here before the public, is that coming back on our agenda?
Councilmember Fote, what I would suggest is, what I plan to do at the study session next week, we will have our docket review, and we will list the range of issues that are on the radar screen, if you will, and then council can add whichever they prefer, and then council will prioritize them, and we'll develop a calendar for study session for the next two months out.
And as far as the other kinds of testimony that comes before the council, such as the leaky bathrooms or whatever, is that, do you just direct people to check out the bathrooms or whatever it is?
Actually, we do follow-up in the bathrooms, for example. We are having new shower, the automatic buttons installed, so that issue will be resolved. But for example, the other issues that we heard, whether it's Chino Road, etc., we will be doing some follow-up, and I will report back to council.
Okay, because it's just, it's a hard thing for people to come up and testify and then feel like it goes into this never, never land, and so I just wanted the citizens to know that we are going to follow up on it.
And then it will be in your weekly report.
Okay. And then the only other thing I had, I had the occasion to, as part of my business, to appear before the West Hollywood City Council on Monday, and they asked me to convey their best wishes to the entire council and their congratulations on our election, so. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Fote. Are there any other reports at this time? First of all, I would like to say a special thank you to all of the citizens of Palm Springs who came to the swearing-in ceremony on November 25, and in a special way to the tribal council who rearranged their schedule to be with us on that day. I think that was quite exceptional, and thank you to all of you for your support and for this dynamic new council. I'd like to say a special thank you to Matthew Talala and all the employees at Atlas who provided a sumptuous feast for us and accommodated the welcome and celebration party for the new council. Thank you, Matthew. On Wednesday, the 26th, I attended a Building Industry Association luncheon at the Spa Hotel, and I was honored to present a star dedication to Art LeBeau on the sidewalk of the city of Palm Springs on Saturday, the 29th. Now, for those of you who listen to The Oldies But Goodies Show on Sunday evenings, you know who Art LeBeau is, or who've listened to Art LeBeau over the years. And so it was a real honor to do that star dedication, and Brenton Wood, who was one of his friends there, sang "Oogum Boogum" on the sidewalk of the city. So it was a very, very special day there for us. Also this week, I had an opportunity to sign my first proclamations officially as Mayor of the city of Palm Springs, and the first one that I signed was presented on Sunday evening to the Stroke Recovery Center, their Winter Wonderland Ball, to Richard Milanovich. So to Richard, congratulations, he's being nominated as Man of the Year. We've heard a few announcements tonight, but the Festival of Lights Parade is on Saturday, this coming Saturday, December 6, at 5:45. So those of you who are familiar, you know you want to get out there as early as possible. We are expecting a huge crowd, and the Festival of Lights Parade is, actually, is my favorite parade, and that parade was started by none other than our former mayor, Mayor Will Kleindeans, and we'll be looking forward to seeing him there as well. On Thursday, December 11, 2003, from 5 to 8, this is the 8th Annual Walk of the End, a small, I mean, a dozen small boutique hotels and bed and breakfasts of the historic tennis district will be opening their doors once more to the community for a look inside at their grounds and some of their accommodations. This is an exceptional program, I haven't been in a couple of years, but I'd like to just let the community know that those of you who have the time, please attend. It is very informative, and you have an opportunity to see some of the great amenities that this city has to offer. I would like to make a request of the city manager, if you would please bring us a report, because we've had some discussion about the new council suite, but of course, everything is just preliminary at this time, an office that would accommodate the council members as well as the mayor and the secretary for that area, if you would please bring us a report on that information so that we will know how to proceed. And I'd just like to thank Ms. Fote for her comments about the follow-up, and I think during our workshop, that will be one of the things that we will discuss, our potential changes that we will make in our process and procedures for the city council and our response to the community and how we conduct our meetings. So at this time, we will move on to our legislative action, municipal code amendment, uniform building codes. Mr. City Manager, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. There are many times when we get accused of cutting red tape lengthwise. This one, however, is going to remedy some of that. This is a true bureaucracy buster, if you will. This is an amendment we're requesting that you support. It's an amendment to the Uniform Building Code. The Economic Development Task Force that convened to discuss development issues, and actually, Chris Mills was on that committee, so was former councilwoman Jeanne Reller Spurgeon, and of course, chairman was our own Mr. Mike McCullough, who is now seated on council. One of the recommendations of that group was to address our grading permits. It's an ordinance, and what we are doing here is asking for an amendment which will, in effect, reduce the requirements for grading permits for residential's and remodeling only. This was recommended by the task force, and we recommend it here as well. If there's any questions, Mr. Evans can answer specifics. Thank you.
We had a question, Mr. Pugnay.
Yes, I think the timing's right now. It mentioned here that the specific item was mentioned by staff to Erwin Kaplan in his review of the planning entitlement process, and specifically included in his report. May we receive a copy of that, and when was that report completed?
Yes, you may receive, actually, those reports, we have had discussion of those at study sessions with the previous council, I'll make sure the new members get reports, and that was also part of the task force presentation, the council's study session. And actually, what I will do is I'll get copies, tapes of that particular study session, and get you the Kaplan report as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I just have one, and that is, what impact does this change have on our PM 10 issues?
I would let our PM 10 czar, Mr. Bracken, field that question. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, czar. Okay. It should not have any effect. One of the reasons we have held this out was to wait for, you know, how the final ordinance was going to read regarding PM 10, but all this simply does is remove a requirement that's been in the code for some time for grading plans that are frankly, little value. The way the code currently reads and the way the PM 10 ordinance reads, if we required a grading plan, they would have to do a dust mitigation plan, and when you're hardly moving any dirt, the need for a dust mitigation plan is even more work that really isn't necessary. If you're not moving dirt, you're not really creating dust, so it doesn't really do anything to the PM 10 plan, it makes the code consistent with the Uniform Building Code.
Thank you, and it does make us more business-friendly. That was that, too. Good.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
David, before you step down, to make it simple, anyone applying then for a addition or remodel to an existing property that's on an existing lot in normal circumstances would not be required to provide a grading permit to the standard that they are now?
That's correct. They would probably be asked to certify whether or not they're moving more than 50 cubic yards or cutting or filling more than, or less than a foot, and if they're not, then they would not be subject to that.
Is that a certification that could be done by the individual pulling the permit?
Yes.
Okay. I would certainly like to thank staff for getting this to us promptly. It was an item that was brought up on the task force, it's one of several items that have come before us since the task force reports was done, and I know there will be several more, and it is, it's a pleasure, I'm sure to all the members of the task force, I know Mike as well, to see the city implementing what took us about six months' worth of two-hour meetings that turned into four-hour meetings to get done. And so, to that end, I would like to move this, oh, before I make the move, just a quick question. It says on the ordinance that the effective date is 30 days after passage, and I understand legally that's the situation. Is there any potential of that policy being implemented immediately?
Yes.
Could we make sure that that policy is implemented immediately as part of this motion, or does it have to be separate, or do I need to say anymore?
The ordinance, you're right, and it's first and second reading, 30 days to be effective, but I think that staff, knowing this is where council is taking it, could administratively apply that policy.
Great, great. It'll be a big line at the counter tomorrow. Then, based on that, I would like to move the ordinance and waive, this is a waive-reading one, right?
Yeah, read text and wave title?
Read text and, no, re-title, wave-text. Don't start computing me already.
I want to second that motion, even though I've finished my remodeling.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Mills and seconded by Ms. Folt, and this municipal code amendment, Uniform Building Codes, and that is to read the title and wave text. Roll call.
And I'll go ahead and read that title. It's an ordinance of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending section 8.04.015 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code to eliminate item 9 regarding grading plan exempted work. Ms. Folt?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Passes unanimously, and we will move to item number six, Convention Center Management. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. What's before you here on this measure is our contract for Convention Center Management, and it's been quite a few months since we've been negotiating this, and I would just like to note some of the highlights of this contract. First of all, this will be a five-year contract with an option to approve for an additional five years at that time. Probably more importantly is, we have been able to successfully lower our management fees every year. For example, this year, we pay $384,000. The first two years of the new contract will be $200,000 per year, the final three years will be $185,000 per year, so that is a significant savings. Now, I would note that how we structured this is, SMG, the management company, has the right to a bonus, and that bonus accrues only if they meet certain performance standards in room nights, because as you know, we get TOT on room nights, so it's within our interest to raise that level of performance, and to the extent they perform well, they will be able to achieve bonuses. I would like to add an important caveat to the bonus side of the equation. A portion of that bonus will be returned back to the Convention Center employees if, in fact, the employees meet certain criteria on customer satisfaction, and that's going to be determined by the event planners and the meeting groups that come there through surveys and follow-up research, and to the extent that our employees are customer-friendly and customer satisfaction is the main driving factor, a portion of that bonus will be returned to the employees, and that's something we're trying to do throughout our community, throughout the organization. You'll see more and more of that as the bargaining unit agreements start coming to council. Also, I would just like to note that we're very pleased to announce $400,000 will be given to the city as a one-time opportunity for the Convention Center Expansion Marketing Program. This was a very important issue with our Convention Center expanding. There's a tremendous need to reach those meeting planners years in advance for their scheduling, and we're very pleased that that's part of this deal. Finally, I would note that the current caterer, Savory, is part and parcel of this contract. They will continue to be a part of the contract under SMG, and as benefit to the city, we will receive $25,000 per year credit to the city for special meetings the city is required to have at the Convention Center for catering, and that certainly will save money from the general fund. And I do need to note that the city council subcommittee that helped negotiate this all along the way was Mayor Kleindees and Mayor Oden, and they were very instrumental in achieving the deal points. And I would also like to thank certainly Assistant City Manager Troy Bootsloff and the city attorney for this negotiation process. And with that, Mr. Mayor would recommend your approval. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask just one comment, just to make sure it's clear?
Yes.
The $400,000, if they are here the five years and they get the extension, so they're really here for 10 years, then it is, you could truly characterize it as a gift to the city. In the event that they weren't here the full 10 years, then there are some provisions for recapturing a portion of that money that has not been amortized over the period that they were here. So I just want to make sure there was that clarification. There is some potential that some of the money would be reimbursed.
Thank you. Council, questions?
I would like to commend city staff on this contract, because I thought I was making a mistake when I was reading the contract and did call Mr. Ready, because the current year is, comes out to, I mean, the first year of the contract comes out that we're paying less than we were this year, and progressively it gets lower. So the whole contract, I think, is, it has goals and objectives and points in which they're going to have to meet a criteria, and I think that's been missing in our past contracts, so I would like to move this motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second and further discussion.
Okay.
I also feel this is a change, obviously, what we've done over the past, and as Ms. Folt mentioned, an incentive-based contract is always, in my opinion, the best way to go in this type of a field. I personally, as a councilman, I would think all the council members here would look forward to authorizing that bonus for SMG if they, and I'm confident that they will do what they want, what they say they can do, and obviously what they think they would do or can do based on this contract. And I have one little modification I would like to entertain if the motion would agree, and that is on 6A3, at the bottom, under Performance Review, second paragraph about the middle, it says the city may require SMG to provide. I would like to change that to the city shall require SMG, and I would like to make sure that we do follow up on that and that the council does receive reports yearly.
I accept that. That's a good point.
Just for clarification, when you say 6A3, you're talking about the description in the staff report? That's the language you're referring to?
Yes, yes.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make one. I was remiss in not recognizing Mr. John Adams from SMG, who's here in the audience with us this evening. He was very flexible in a lot of these, and I think it's because of him that SMG, as a corporation, accepted the terms in this contract. And also, I would note that he has agreed to come to Palm Springs on a quarterly basis to meet with the hoteliers group, that way to listen and make sure he understands what their issues are as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. McCullough?
What timeline was this contract negotiated under? We've seen several timelines, and it's been delayed and delayed because the incentives are based on, obviously, occupancy and attendance.
Yes, we've had a couple, two, at least two extensions, and that was in part to finalize the negotiations. It was very long-term, and there's a lot of details to cover, and we just felt the more time would give us a better contract, and it has resulted in a better product, we believe.
So this contract, was it renegotiated after the latest delay in the expansion of the Convention Center, or is this pre-delay?
Pre-delay.
So that makes it really a better, from SMG's standpoint, it's going to be tougher for them to probably make the incentives.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
There are some provisions that provide for an adjustment based upon the effect of the construction process. It floats a little bit with what difficulties, how that may affect the performance.
Are there any other questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor made by Ms. Folt and seconded by Mr. Mills with an amended recommendation that it include, shall instead of may.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I may address that, unless the city attorney wants to.
Well, we're probably going to say the same thing. The actual, the may was, I think it was in the staff report that way, because it was talking about the performance review could include all of those various elements, but when you go to the actual contract, it basically, they have to, they are required to submit all of those components every year, so shall is actually used in the text.
So then we don't have to amend the motion?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, the only thing we'd ask that you amend is the section 1.7 that you presented tonight, that revised language. That was not included in the original staff report that was transmitted to council last Friday, so we'd ask that you take the section 1.7 that was given to you tonight and incorporate that into the agreement.
Mr. Mayor, can I, is the only changes on the underlined portion?
Correct, that's a red line strikeout.
Seems like I'd read this before.
Yes.
Okay.
We just basically put a new defined term called 12-month period to set forth the requirements for if a successor management company is retained by the city and when the payment would be due back to SMG, so it's all highlighted there in the revised language.
Roll call.
Ms. Folt?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor?
Aye. Passes unanimously, and we will move to item number seven, Emergency Dispatch Centers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is 911 state funds that we receive every year for specific improvements in our 911 center. This expenditure will be for adjustable consoles, which will assist with the ergonomics and actually make our dispatchers more efficient in their duties. This is a $40,142 expenditure, and we request that you approve this resolution. Thank you.
Council, are there any questions, observations under staff report? Mr. Mills?
Motion to approve the minute order.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to follow the recommendation, the Emergency Dispatch Center. A motion was made by Mr. Mills and seconded by Ms. Folt. Roll call.
Ms. Folt?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye. It passes unanimously. Are there any additional legislative items?
There are none, sir.
Added starters?
There are none.
Reports or requests?
I have...
Council reports or requests?
I have a request that, and how we adjourn the meeting, so should I leave that to the end?
Oh, you could make this comment now. Do you want to do it after this?
I'll do it after that.
All right. I have a request. Today, I was on Sonora where they are installing the humps, and I have a concern about the language on the signs, because it doesn't say dip, and it doesn't say speed bumps. It says humps, and I don't know if that's a clear message to the drivers of what to expect, because if they are speeding and they hit a hump, it's different from a speed bump, and so I'm a little concerned about the language on the signs.
It should say whether it's a noun or a verb, right?
Not everyone can conjugate. Yes.
Okay, Mayor, I'll check into that nomenclature issue, and we'll report back at the next meeting.
Please.
Very serious issue.
All right, we will move to item...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I've got a request. In our council packet, we had a fairly lengthy report on Bike Weekend from several different agencies. We didn't have a report from Main Street, and I would like to have a report from Main Street. I know they have some specific interests in the downtown event, and I do know there were a few problems, and I'd like to have those outlined for us so we can deal with them in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Folt?
I had requested that we do an added starter regarding requesting a voting kiosk in Palm Springs, and that the city clerk could request that we have one similar to what's in the Westfield Shopping Plaza, and so I don't know exactly what happened to that.
Actually, Councilmember Folt, we will have to agendize that at the next meeting. I would not meet the criteria of an added starter, but we are making inquiries with the county clerk's office to find out specifically what our requirements are that they need to get us in that loop for a potential portable site or mobile site.
Okay, so we will have it on a future agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of requests.
Yes.
The first request is the ability to revisit the catastrophic insurance issue that came up before with the previous council, and in what form that we could do that?
We can put that on the next legislative calendar.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the second one, this could be potentially a study session, but I'm very interested in learning a little bit more about the marketing plan or the business plan of downtown for the city, for all elements of, you know, the strategies for the future, bringing together the people that can make this happen. So, Mr. Ready, I would suggest that potentially with a study session, I'm very anxious to see how we're targeting, who we're going after for potential businesses, so how, however you would deem that appropriate.
Are there any other requests? Then we will move to item number eight, Council Appointees and Liaisons. Mr. Ready? Madam Clerk?
The, I faxed, well, actually, Martha faxed out a copy like this to the council this morning, and you also have one in your yellow folder before you, hopefully that clarifies some of them for you on the committees. As you'll note, currently, the designated alternates are listed in that last column. Some of the members are no longer on the council, so they'll need replacement.
How are we supposed to, so how are we supposed to handle this?
Well, I've been informed that some of the council members are not aware of what these committees entail, and it is not imperative that we act on all of these tonight. There are a few that I think that are pressing, but those would involve the role and function of the mayor. So we could take a little time until our next meeting, and it's possible that we could either do this on our next legislative meeting, or we could possibly do it at the agendizer for the study session as well. But it just depends on how much time we really need to make sure that everyone understands the committees, because initially, I was hoping that we could really appoint based upon skill set, but I know that there are a lot of other issues that people are faced with, and those are time constraints as well, so it'll give you some time also to look at your work schedules and to make those determinations. So would you suggest that it comes back to us?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, what I think might be a good thing to do is, I will agendize that as part of the workshop for next week to discuss the nature of these positions, but I would suggest for tonight, the C-VAG and the CVA would probably be important ones to appoint, and I believe those are the mayor appointments, the alternate certainly could wait until a future time.
And what about CVA?
Yes, the CVA and C-VAG. Yes, the CVA and Sea Vag.
Okay.
Thank you.
The RCTC, that meets next Wednesday.
Oh, and the RCTC meets next Wednesday, and that would be your responsibility, Mayor.
Okay, so those are four. RCTC, the CVA, Sea Vag.
There's just three.
Okay, those three. Executive, probably, and then I'd be the alternate on the others, anyway.
So meaning Sea Vag, Exec?
Yes.
Ms. Clerk, in the case of the ones that...
Mr. Mills?
Excuse me. I forgot to do that.
Sure, that's right.
Bad teacher. The, Ms. Clerk, in the case of the ones which the mayor is the appointee, then do we need a nomination for that, or is that just automatic?
Well, on some of them, it's automatic, but it would be better if you made a motion so that I'll have a clear record that you're appointing him as the voting member, and then I assume you're waiting for later to do the alternate.
Okay, if we do the executive, we don't have to, okay, yeah, that'd be fine. We'll fore and entertain a motion at this time.
I move that the appointment to the Sea Vag Executive Committee be Mayor Oden.
You want to do all of them? The CVA, Sunline, and RCTC?
Are those your desires? Well, then so moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is carried unanimously.
Yeah, and the...
Okay, we will now look at our boards and commissions. Madam Clerk, how many seats are open on the Human Rights Commission?
One.
Only one seat at this time?
Mm-hmm, and it's a short term.
It's a short...
It's to fill a vacancy.
And what's the remainder, the remainder of that?
It'll expire on June 30th, 2004. The purpose of putting, you have two different commissions that are, this one is experiencing vacancy, and the other one is coming up for the actual reappointment time. And I understand that it's kind of quickly for the new council to get these applications, but at some point, you're going to have to address how you're going to fill vacancies. And so the applications that I've received, and we have complied with the Mati Act on these, are in your packets, and those are the applications our office have received up until this point.
Okay. Certainly, on the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District, Mr. Price has just been exceptional, but I do know at this time that there are the people who are going to apply, and he's been doing this for, what, 10 years?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes. So if we could hold off on, on that one, and if we want to...
I would like to...
Hold them both?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would like to see us hold off on both. First, I would like to see them more widely publicized, but secondly, I really think that we need to take a look at the commissions and their role and their, their goals and objectives, and instead of just putting someone on the commission, I think we need to, to look at that. So I would, I would move that we, we postpone any action on both nine and 10.
I would second that.
Okay, we can do that. Are you looking at a revision of the boards and commissions, or just finding more information about what they, the services that they provide and what they were designed to do?
Well, I frankly think if we have a board, if we have boards and commissions, they have to have clear vision and policy, and where they're going, and what, and what we want to see them do. So I would like to see that as, as, as a review item for us as, as council members. I certainly know what the, what the, what they're supposed to do, but I really would like to see if there is, if there is a mission and a vision, and where each, what we can expect of each board and commission, and before we just appoint people to vacancies.
Well, certainly, we do have that information, but if we want to revise it or expand, we can certainly look at, look at that.
I did look at, at a number of the commissions, which I don't feel have that, those, those, clearly those goals.
Okay. Then certainly, that would involve a lot more time than we have currently, and there's one appointment that we have only until the end of the month to make. The others, we have perhaps a little more time, but it really creates a difficulty for the current commission to function when they are short. But I think if we're looking at a long-range goal to perhaps revise our boards and commissions, that's, that's acceptable, but it would take more time than we have. But we can still hold off on these for, until our next meeting to have an opportunity to look at them.
So that I like these back on the next regular meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
We have, there is a motion and a, and a second, and to, regarding, I think for postponement, but then the issue got clouded about looking about, I mean, and I think there's two, two separate issues. If we want to request a review of the goals of boards and, of the boards and commissions, then that's a whole different item.
You're right.
And perhaps we could talk about that at our study session, which is where we're going to establish our agenda for that. The, as far as the appointments, what I would like to just mention, in the, in the past, we have always had a interview process, and I think it is, you know, having gone through the process, having been on both sides of the table through the process, having been involved as a chair in, in the process, I, I would hate to see that process be put aside, even for a single appointment, because it's always the hope that your single appointment will ultimately get reappointed. And so I would like to, like us to, if we're going to do an appointment, let's schedule at least an interview, potentially. We have not had, in my, in my purview, a really reliable system since we changed from the old one, and in that it's been left up to the individual council people to do their own interviewing, although in the past, I've done it before with another councilman, and in some cases, there were three of us, and we agendized it. So whatever the process is, I think we, we as council people have a responsibility to, to talk to everyone who takes the time to file an application, in this case, and to, to make a value, or a, a, a recommendation based on an actual interview. So I would like us to make sure that we, that we do that. In the case of Mosquito and Vector, I guess our time is short, but I guess we can talk about that at our next meeting, so.
You know, I would agree with you, Mr. Mills. Certainly, we started off with a process, I've been through so many processes, where we had the cattle call, where you had everyone in one big meeting, to the council meeting with individuals, down to the, the new system. I do think it's important, and I like, I think it's a good thing to try to interview everyone, even though we previously had a shortlist process where we would shortlist, but I think that that process left people feeling devalued. So I think you, we really have to look at interviewing everyone. And if we don't have that much time, perhaps we need to discuss a process anyway, and at least so that the council members can meet and potentially set something up to interview. And I see your eyes going, Ms. Madam Clerk.
So that I understand where you're going, are you saying that you want to interview these folks and these applications? Is that what you're telling me, or do you want to talk about it again at the next meeting?
First of all, I'd like somebody to, to reread the motion that's on the floor, so I can remember what it was.
The motion was to, was to postpone, but we didn't say to a date that was, that was clear, so if we want to establish that. The next meeting...
Mr. Mayor, are we on item nine? Because I think we're, we're discussing both nine and 10.
Yes.
The motion that was made involved both items nine and 10, and it said defer it, and it didn't say what the time period was, but then it could be the next meeting.
The next meeting, that's fine. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's everyone. And now, public reports or requests? Staff report or requests? We have a joint meeting December 4th, tomorrow at 5:00 PM with the Awa Kalente Band of Kaua Indians at the Convention Center. Is that preceded by a closed session?
Yes, at 4:00 PM, Mr. Mayor.
At 4:00 PM? Where?
Boardroom.
Boardroom? Here in the boardroom.
Convention Center, boardroom.
Okay. And the next regular meeting is December 17th at 7:00 PM. The next study session is December 10th at 7:00 PM, both preceded by a closed session. Now, I just need clarification, are we going to adjourn into closed session, or do you want to hold off until our next meeting?
Oh, I'll need to hold it off, because I do have another appointment.
Okay. Then we'll have to hold it off. Okay, then we will call this meeting.
No, 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 I want to adjourn this in the AIDS Day, World AIDS Day.
To what? Oh.
Mr. Mayor, December, I wanted to adjourn this meeting with some words about December 1st, which was World AIDS Day, and unfortunately, we were not in session then, so I'm doing it tonight. And I just wanted to give a couple of statistics. Worldwide, there are 40 million people infected with AIDS, and half of that number are women and children. In the United States, 15,000 people died last year of AIDS. That's half the population of the city of Palm Springs, almost. There are 40,000 new infections each year in the United States, and 15,000 deaths a year. And there are approximately 250,000 people living with AIDS that are not aware that they're living with AIDS. And women are the number one group being infected now. And so I just wanted us to take a moment to, to think about those statistics, and to adjourn the meeting in remembrance of those people who have been infected.
And on that sobering note, we will call this meeting adjourned.